Thanks, Matthew.
You got it. All right. Good evening, East Hampton Town Board. We're live on Channel 22. We're streaming to YouTube. The phone lines are open for public comment. This meeting is being recorded, and you may begin.
Thank you, Matthew. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the East Hampton Town Board Meeting of Thursday, April 17, 2025. Carol, if you could please read the roll call.
Councilmember Flight, Councilmember Lee.
Present.
Councilmember Rogers.
Present.
Councilmember Call to Piedmont.
Present.
Supervisor Park Gonzalez.
Present. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight, we have three public hearings. The first is to amend Chapter 25, the Code of Ethics. The second public hearing is to establish the East Hampton Water Supply and Fire District, Fire Protection District. And lastly, there's a grant of scenic and conservation easement for 114 South Edna Avenue in Montauk. That's going to be followed by public portion and then resolutions. We ask when you come up to address the board or you're calling in to kindly keep your comments to three minutes. So, Carol, oh, wait, we've got Hugh here. Hugh, come on down.
Okay. Hugh King, East Hampton Town historian. Tonight, we were supposed to talk about Police Chief William Jacobs, but we're going to pass on that. And we could also be talking about Helen Ratray, who just passed away, but we'll push, I'm going to push them because I want to talk again about Josephine Kraske. Josephine Kraske, of course, was 100 years old, and she passed away. I just want to remind everybody what it was like when she was born. The Amegansett School, when Mrs. Kraske was born, was on the corner of Whipperwill Street and Montauk Highway. Whipperwill Street was changed, for some crazy reason, to Atlantic Avenue. So where the tennis courts are now, that's where the 1881 school was. Mrs. Kraske went to that school. Then, when they built the school on Main Street, Mrs. Kraske went to that school, too. Myon Comer Hall was owned by the Lady Society of Busy Workers in 1925. The firehouse, the Amegansett Firehouse, was on where the parking lot and playground is of the Amegansett School, right to the right. That's where the Amegansett Firehouse was in 1925. David Barnes was living in his relative's house. His relatives was Erastus Barnes, a whaleboat captain. The house is now Stephen Talkhouse, but that was a Barnes homestead, and he was living there in 1925. The Seaview Hotel had just burned down. The Seaview Hotel was Amegansett's only hotel. It was on the corner of Futter Lane and Indian Wells Highway. The East Hampton Golf and Country Club had just been built. It's now the site of the South Fork Club, and they're changing the name back to the Amegansett Golf Club. Scoville Hall had just been built. Miss Amelia may have been living in her cottage in 1925. She died in 1930, upstate New York, so I don't know where she was in 1925. The Amegansett Library Building was only four years old. The Life Saving Station was still in use in 1925. The post office was in Conklin Hand Store on Main Street. Now it's that historic landmark, Il Buto something, I don't know what it is. Kessuno's Garage has just been built, and the Amegansett Windmill had just burned down in 1925, and the Amegansett Windmill was on Windmill Lane. All right, I'll be back later.
So Hugh, I think you gave Josephine her proclamation, didn't you? Weren't you there when she?
I didn't, I was there when Mrs.
For the 100 and, her 101st birthday.
You gave it to Mrs. Kearls and Josephine, right?
For, for 101, but then the year prior, Tom and I gave it to Josephine out at the Montauk Nutrition Program.
Oh, so she got two proclamations?
For 100, well, you get, when you, you'll, you'll learn this. When you, when you turn 90, you get one every year. We have an over-90 party, and we give proclamations.
You do? Oh, you get one at 90?
90 and.
And up. All right, I'll see you at 90.
All right, Carol, if you could please read the first meeting notice.
The public hearings will be held live and in person by the town board and will be available electronically by video and teleconferencing and will be televised on local TV, Channel 22, and available for livestream on the LTV website. The public shall be permitted to appear in person but may also provide comments on the matter being heard by calling 351-888-6331. Any person or party wishing to be heard with respect to the foregoing may do so in person, by agent, by attorney, or by written comment addressed to the East Hampton Town Clerk, 159 Panago Road, East Hampton. Comments may also be submitted to the town clerk by email to cbrannon@ehamptonny.gov. All comments must be received by the town clerk by the date and time of the public hearing. Please check the meeting agenda posted on the town's website for any changes and for updated information. Notice is hereby given that the town board of the town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing at Town Hall, 159 Panago Road, East Hampton, on Thursday, April 17, at 6:00 p.m. or soon thereafter as this matter may be heard to consider comments of all persons regarding the amendment of Chapter 25 Ethics Code of, of the Town Code of the Town of East Hampton, an abstract of which follows, "A Local Law Amending Chapter 25 Ethics Code of the East Hampton Town Code." A full text of the local law is available for inspection in the office of the Town Clerk, 159 Panago Road, East Hampton during regular business hours.
Thank you, Carol. So we have Hugh King signed up. Welcome back, Hugh.
New guy over there. Okay, Hugh King, now I'm the chairman of the East Hampton Town Board of Ethics. I'm speaking for the Board of Ethics. The Board of Ethics agrees that the Community Housing Advisory Board and the Water Quality Technical Advisory Committee should be added to those who fill out financial disclosure forms. The Board of Ethics agrees that the advisory opinions which affect the employment of individual town employers should be forwarded to the Human Resources Department to be included in the employee's personnel file. Another suggestion we have, it doesn't need a change in the code, prospective employees should be given a copy of the Code of Ethics when they are interviewed, especially the conflicts of interest prohibited. So when they're interviewed, they understand, you know, what the parameters would be. I don't think, we can just ask Human Resources to do that. I don't think you need a code change. All right. The Board of Ethics agrees that board members and other municipal employees should be allowed to accept a complimentary ticket to an event, regardless of price, as long as the attendance is part of their official governmental duties. However, spouses, significant others, or guests who are not governmental employees should not be allowed a complimentary ticket as, as they are not performing a governmental duty. That's, that's our opinion. So you can do what, what you want with it.
Thank you, Hugh. Would anyone else like to address the board on this matter? Matthew, is there anyone on the line?
We have no callers on the line.
Motion to close?
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
Carol, if you could please read the second meeting notice.
Notice is hereby given that the town board of the town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing at Town Hall, 159 Panago Road, East Hampton, on Thursday, April 17, at 6:00 p.m. or soon thereafter as this matter may be heard to consider comments of all persons regarding the establishment of a Fire Protection District over the entire portion of the East Hampton Water Supply District to be entitled the East Hampton Water Supply and Fire Protection District pursuant to New York State Town Law Section 170. The public hearing will.
Okay, great. Is there anyone that would like to address the board on this public hearing? Matthew, is there anyone that's joined the line?
We do have one caller. I'll put them through.
Good evening, Town Board. This is David Buddha. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
I assume you can. I just want to clarify, request a clarification. It sounds to me like this is merely a nomenclature change, that we had a water protection, a Fire Protection District that had the name of just being a Water Supply District, and you were simply changing the name to include both functions, Water Supply and Fire Protection, and that there, this does not in any way constitute a change to the boundaries of the existing Fire Protection District, which is currently known as the Water Supply District, East Hampton Water Supply District. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Then I have one more suggestion, since, you know, most, a lot of people don't understand Fire Protection Districts and how they came into existence as opposed to Fire Districts. There would probably be some savings in paperwork and function if the Northwest Fire Protection District were to be merged with the East Hampton Water Supply and Fire Protection District, since both of those Fire Protection Districts are contracted with, by the town, are contracted with the Village of East Hampton to provide all of their fire protection and ambulance services. Has any thought been given to the possibility of considering to merge those two existing Fire Protection Districts so that they would only be have, be one budget and one resolution necessary to provide service, and, and there would be some streamlining of, and some efficiencies that would result, I believe? So that's my question and comment. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Matthew, is there anyone else on the line?
We have no other callers on the line at this time.
Motion to close?
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
Carol, if you could please read the last meeting notice.
Please take notice that pursuant to Section 247, the General Municipal Law of the State of New York and the provisions of the East Hampton Town Code, the Town Board of the Town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing in Town Hall Meeting Room, 159 Panago Road, East Hampton, Thursday, April 17, at 6:00 p.m. or sooner after as this matter may be heard concerning the following grant of scenic and conservation easement to the Town of East Hampton. The grant was Paul Kenyon to scenic and conservation easement dated March 4. The location is 114 South Edna Avenue in Montauk, Suffolk County Tax Map 300, 4923, and the reviewing agency is the ZBA.
Thank you, Carol. And I have Sam Kramer signed up?
Not for this.
Oh, not for this? Okay. Do I have anyone here that would like to address the board on this public hearing? Matthew, has anyone else joined the line?
We have David Buddha on the line as well. I'll put him through.
Does he want to speak again?
Hi. Actually, I just jumped back on the line so that I would be in place in order to speak during the public comment section. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, David.
I have a motion close.
Motion closed.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, now we're up to the public portion. Sam, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome. I'm used to saying welcome. Good evening. Thank you for having me here. I have a court appearance on May 1, and I won't be able to be here. I'll file a letter so that my comments can be on, so you'll have my comments on the record. But I wanted to come here tonight and just say a few words about the proposed amendments to allow the town to exempt itself from the zoning code. There's much that is wrong with the proposal, both procedurally and substantively, but let me start with this. It's totally unnecessary. Can the town board cite to even one example of some vital town need not being met or being unduly delayed because the town had to endure the inconvenience of complying with zoning? Is there any project that the town was unable to implement because of the zoning code? Or is undertaking a Monroe balancing test simply too high a bar for the town? It's hard to believe, given how little it takes to comply with, with the requirements of Monroe. As for the law itself, the problem begins with the definition of community resources. The definition includes just about every asset that the town owns or is likely to own, and all the town board has to do is wave a magic wand, and that asset automatically qualifies as a community resource. It's difficult to imagine any town asset that would not qualify as a community resource. There are many other problems with this proposal, but I just want to focus on two. First, does the town board think that it has monopoly on good planning? Does the town board really think that it knows better than the planning board how to deal with traffic flow or environmental impacts or character of the community? Does the town board really think that it knows better than the zoning board about setbacks and natural resources special permits? And is the town board really qualified to choose among the aesthetic choices in which the ARB is expert? But even more important than that, and I'll leave, leave with this, the nature of a zoning code anywhere is that it inconveniences property owners. There is a trade-off between the benefit to the town and the inconvenience to the property owners. This town has thrived because of its zoning code, and just because other municipalities have passed similar laws as is proposed does not mean we should pass such a law here. This town's regulatory boards are very careful in how they enforce the zoning codes. Allowing an entire class of projects to avoid the strictures of the zoning code merely because those projects emanate from Town Hall rather than from a private developer undermines the legitimacy of the zoning code and the boards that enforce it. A bad project is a bad project, and it doesn't matter whether that project is a public project or a private project. And the town board should not be given carte blanche to impose bad projects on the town. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sam. Would anyone else like to address the board on this, for this public hearing? I mean, I'm sorry, for public portion? Come on up, Larry. Welcome, Larry.
Hello. Thank you, Board. Just a little bit to say on this issue here. I watched your meeting last Tuesday, and I watched Rob start, and there were a lot of things that Rob said which I and a lot of town people would like kind of more in our regular, everyday life. He said this would enable swift development. It would, could eliminate economic waste. I mean, these are all great things. Then Tom went in, and he said this would enable operational efficiency. And then Tom went on to say, this is what we need to operate. Ian went in to say, this is fiscally responsible not to waste resources, and this is a reasonable, efficient process. Kate then said, when we need dune restoration and we need to fix it quickly, it'll prevent damage. I've seen many people in front of you guys whose houses were about to wash away who wanted to dump some sand in front of their house. Kate said it would be more efficient, more conducive, not restrictive. The DEC is tough. So what you guys do as a town is your thing, but I think what I'm here for is, and this isn't you, this is 40 years of zoning in this town, which has done a beautiful job, but I think we've gotten to a point where it doesn't work anymore. When it takes two years to do some processes just to change windows, something has to change. I've got a project right now on the water. It would be something, there's a term, I think it's building kind. I think I heard it somewhere here. The house, when you see it from the street, is six feet tall, nine feet tall on the water side. I offered to take the septic that goes directly almost into the harbor right now, put in a nitrogen system on the street side, get a HERS rating, get compliant on all of the code, but because I want to change the windows, I'm a year and a half into this process. The anger that this creates when I'm trying to take a 1,600-square-foot house, turn it into a 1,600-square-foot house, not an inch bigger, an inch higher, get a HERS rating, make it energy compliant, and clean up the septic, and give a 25 strip of rebuff along the harbor, when this takes me two years, something is broken. And I would love it if you guys would meet with us so that we could, and again, not build a house, build a bigger house in that location, but when people are asking to do interior renovations, upgrade septic systems, that we can make those things happen faster. Like I said, we live in a beautiful town, or zoning is our most important thing, and love to continue on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Larry. Would anyone else like to address the board? Kevin? Welcome.
Thank you for letting me be heard. I'd like to echo with Mr. Kramer.
State your name for the.
Kevin Scott.
For the clerk. Thank you, Kevin.
I'd like to echo what Mr. Kramer said, and as a resident in Freetown, I presented to the town board a few, about 10 days ago, a letter from our organization, neighborhood organization, asking you to consider visiting us and discussing how zoning impacts things that have been proposed in our neighborhood, as well as the important archaeological and historical things that have been found in certain sites in our area that dovetail into the Plain Sight Project, as well as things that have been discovered in the last year that the State Parks Department is looking into. So this aligns itself with my opposition and my grievances to Kramer and others who are very concerned about this, what seems to be an overreaction, in my, in my opinion, to allow things to be designated a community resource. Exactly what is that? We who live in a historic African-American community, which is now quite diverse, but began that way, is a Montauk and African-American community, are concerned that these types of changes in the zoning could, could result in chaos. What, we believe we are a community resource. We'd like this board and other agencies to put resources supporting the Parks Department designation of our area into a framework of this becoming a cultural historic district. But how does this type of law or amendment conflict with changing zoning arbitrarily, potentially, and allowing development because some folks think it's inconvenient? I agree that while the processes are, may seem long to developers, I think they work perfectly. I think they're fabulous. I think that they speak to maintaining the character of this community, and that this community is now at tilt as it relates to traffic and noise and all the things that come with overdevelopment. A 6,000-square-foot house on a quarter acre doesn't make sense to me. Both the noise and traffic and shadows it creates on its neighbors. I think the recent change in square footage makes sense. I think this is contravening that. And so I wanted to come up and speak to that, and to, again, on the record, invite this board to meet with our community organization in person. I'll host coffee, whatever, donut holes, whatever you like, and have further discussion about this proposal, as well as what we presented to you as it relates to development and zoning compliance and following environmental noise, traffic legislation, and, and rules that are in place now, CERF that is in place now. We should not arbitrarily remove that because of a convenience or a supposition that it will improve the process. I could no more strongly disagree than if I were two feet taller. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Kevin.
Kevin, just FYI, I did not receive your email. This is a common thing. I've got a strange name.
It wasn't. It was hand-delivered.
Oh, it was hand-delivered, okay. But I can send it to you or drop it off.
I just, it might not have gotten to my left.
I don't think I received it either.
Oh, I left it with.
Yeah, because I'd love to talk to you also about the St. Matthew's Chapel.
Yes, it all ties in. So why don't I, I'll drop it.
No, I'll get it. I didn't realize. I thought you emailed it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it from Kathy.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you. Okay. Would anyone else like to address the board? Matthew, is there anyone on the line? I believe David Buddha is, right?
Yes, David's still waiting. I'll put him through.
Thank you.
Thank you again. This is David Buddha from the Springs. I'm calling in tonight to register my strong protest against the proposed consideration and adoption of Resolution 2025-593, sponsored by Councilperson Rogers, concerning the proposed exemption of any and all so-called community resources from the town's zoning requirements. My objections to this resolution are both procedural and substantive. Since time is so short for public comment, let me start with the procedural faux pas, faux pas's you have committed. New York State Town Law Section 264, Part N1, requires at least 10 days' public notice by publication for any public hearing to consider any amendment of the zoning code. This resolution would violate the state town law statute. Also, Town Code Section 255930(c) mandates that every proposed amendment or change to the zoning chapter of the Town Code shall be referred to the planning board for a written recommendation, and such referral must be made prior to any public hearing on the proposed change, and shall be made with sufficient time to allow the planning board to consider the proposed change at a regularly scheduled planning board meeting, and to forward its recommendation to the town board prior to the date of any town board hearing. By scheduling a public hearing or proposing to schedule a public hearing on May 1, a mere 14 days from tonight, you appear to be ensuring that the planning board would not have a reasonable opportunity to review, consider, and comment, and transfer that comment to the, to you on the significant, very significant proposed change to the town zoning code. Turning now to my substantive concerns, the proposal to amend the town zoning code to create an all-encompassing definition of community resources that would be exempt, that would exempt all such uses on any town-owned property from compliance with town zoning for all town-sponsored projects for recreational, cultural, environmental, and quote, "all others, all other areas of public interest," end quote, is totally misguided, overly broad, and would have an unlimited scope of applicability to the possible detriment of many owners of properties located adjacent to any town-owned land. There is nothing inherent in the political qualifications for one to run for and to be elected to the town board that qualifies any of you to supersede and disembowel the functions of the planning board, zoning board of appeals, and architectural review board in one fell swoop. These development regulatory boards were created by state and town laws because these boards provide critical and essential oversight of all development in our town. This proposal would place all town projects on a gilded pedestal where the town interests would trump over the interests of any and all neighboring property owners. The means and mechanism for challenging any such town board-approved development projects would be either non-existent or would have to proceed through uncharted waters. I have just one more paragraph. Our three statutorily created boards that exercise regulatory control over development applications must follow strict rules and regulations that provide the public with access to every document submitted to the boards. There is a court process for challenging determinations rendered by those boards. Does the proposed mechanism for town board reviewing and approving all community resource developments provide for the same level of public participation, oversight, and protection? My answer is clearly, it does not. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Matthew, is there anyone else on the line?
We have no other callers on the line.
Okay, so we are going to move on to resolutions. David?
I happily offer Resolution 2025-573. This is warrant number 4B. This is approval of claims in the amount of $3,937,017.75, and a utility warrant, 4B, in the amount of $58,657.50.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
574, it's a scheduled public hearing for a real property acquisition. The purported owner is Jerry and Peter Killer at 351 Old Stone Highway in Spring, Suffolk County Tax Map 300-83-6-5. This is 5.6 acres of developed land located at 351 Old Stone Highway. The proposed purchase price is $1.75 million. The purpose of said acquisition is for open space using community preservation funds. The public hearing will be held on May 1, 2025, at 6:00 p.m.
Second, all in favor.
Aye. Excuse me. 575 is a notice of public hearing for a water grant, water quality grant, award for our, our, it's round one of 2025, for DNR Family Realty Group, LLC. This is for IA upgrade. This is for IA upgrade. The project sponsor is the DNR Family Realty Group LLC. The summary is an installation of innovative alternative sanitary system to upgrade the existing septic system, serving 2,130 gallons per day flow at the restaurant located at 28 Maeston Park Road, East Hampton. The project type is a wastewater treatment improvement. The funding, the funding award would be $70,038. The public hearing also will be held on May 1st, 2025 at 6:00 PM.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
576 is a notice of public hearing for water quality grant award, round one for 2025. This is for the Sag Harbor Sewer Ship, Sewer Shed L for Engineering. The project sponsor is the Village of Sag Harbor. The summary is engineering design costs associated with the expansion of Sewer Shed L sewer service area to include Sag Harbor schools. The project type is a wastewater treatment improvement. The funding award would be $31,900. The public hearing is also to be held on May 1st, 2025 at 6:00 PM.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
577 is a notice of public hearing. This is for a water quality grant for round one for 2025. This is for the Springs General Store. And this, the project sponsor is Daniel Bennett of Vidan Fleece LLC slash Springs General Store. The summary is an installation of an IA upgrade to serve the Springs General Store with a flow of 562 gallons per day to replace an existing conventional septic system. The project type is a wastewater treatment improvement. The funding award would be $131,567. The public hearing also be held on May 1st, 2025.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me. 578 is a notice of public hearing. This is for water quality grant award for round one of 2025. This is for Treescape at East Hampton Condominiums. Project sponsor is Treescape at East Hampton Condominiums. The summary is an installation of IA upgrades to serve 24 units on two properties at the Treescape Condominiums with a flow of 7,200 gallons per day. The project type is a wastewater treatment improvement. The funding award would be $327,273. The public hearing on this also will be held on May 1st, 2025 at 6:00 PM.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 2025-579 is a notice of public hearing for water quality grant award for round one of 2025. This is for Clear Bays Enhanced Wetland in Hog Creek. The project sponsor is Clear Bays Environmental. The summary is a design installation of an enhanced wetland restoration project that headwaters of Hog Creek to stabilize an eroding shoreline and provide groundwater nitrogen-reducing benefits to Hog Creek. Project type is non-point, non-point source pollution reduction and habitat restoration. The funding award would have been, would be $91,328. The public hearing also will be held on May 1st, 2025 at 6:00 PM.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
580 is a notice of public hearing. This is for a water quality grant award for round one of 2025. This is for the South Fork Sea Farmers. Project sponsor is South Fork Sea Farmers. The summary is to support an oyster reef building project in Three Mall Harbor for shell washer conveyor and tumbler to improve operations and the quality of reef sites. The project type is a wastewater treatment improvement and the funding award is $46,000. The public hearing also will be held on May 1st, 2025.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
581 is RFP EH 2025-102. This is a request for proposal for license to utilize agricultural lands at 20 Springs Parkway Place Road. The proposal is available on April 24th, 2025, and the proposal is due back on May 15th, 2025, excuse me. For any questions, please contact Town's Purchasing Department at 631-324-4183.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
582 is a notice to bidders for EH 25-018. This is for kitchen uniforms and, uniforms and small wares. The bid is available on April 17th, 2025, and the bid is due back on May 1st, 2025. And any information is needed, please contact the purchasing department at East Hampton.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
583 is Abraham's Path Park Comfort Station and Storage Building. The bid is EH 2025-015. This, the bid is available on April 17th, 2025, and the bid is due back on May 15th, 2025. All bidders are strongly urged to attend a pre-meeting for EH 25-015 on Wednesday, April 30th, 2025, 11:00 AM at the site located at 306 Abraham's Path. Any questions, please contact the Town's Purchasing Department at 631-324-4183.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
584 is a notice of bidders for EH 25-020. This is for the SYA, Springs Youth Association for the HVAC Improvements. Bid available is on 4/24/25. The bid is due back on 5/15/25. Any questions, please contact Town's Purchasing Department.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
585 is a set bid, EH 25-008. This is for food service, kitchenware items, and miscellaneous foods from March 2025 to Mivalia Foods, excuse me, of New York Incorporated, to Sam Tell and Sons Incorporated, Jerusalem Distribution Incorporated, DBA's Metal Star, and Interboro Packaging Hardy Party.
All right.
That's all.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Why not, right? Okay, so I'm happy to present Resolution 2025-586 is the set bid for EH 2025-011. This is for pump out take monitor, pump out tank monitoring systems to Aventur Construction Corporation, where the town received a bid for Aventur Construction Corporation and hereby accept the total cost of $67,998 for the pump out tank monitoring assistance proj, assistance project. Thank you.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
587 is a set bid, EH 25-016. This is the big one for portable toilets for rental and servicing for 2025 to Call Ahead Corporation.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
588 is approved change order number three. This is for the Montauk Playhouse Community Center. This was for bid EH 23-036 to Macaron Plumbing. Discuss this earlier. This was a total change order number three in the amount of $4,640.43. This is to provide additional funds to cover operation and replace a bell and flow switch.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
589 is approved change order number eight. This is for the Montauk Playhouse Community Center. This is for EH 23-036. This is to MRJ Industries LLC. The change order for number eight is for $17,200. These are funds to cover an installation of house metering equipment, brake feeds with trowel and conduit to, to route through metering equipment for one 800A panel and two 200A panels.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
590 is approved change order number nine. This is for the Montauk Playhouse Community Center. This is for Crossroads Construction Corporation. These change orders, number nine, total $77,064.62. This is the cover costs for miscellaneous wall and roof penetrations, not including HVAC contractor scope of work. They raised the west lobby handrail height to 48 inches to add pool filters, additional two guardrails for west windows, additional railing on the stadium stair, additional steel beams required, and south lobby carpet and tile transition, transition, excuse me.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
591 is approved change order number 10 for the Montauk Playhouse Community Center's Foundation for Crossroads Construction Corporation for bid EH 23-036. This is the change order for 10 in the amount of $50,000. This is recommended to the town to approve, to prove to deduct the allowance amount on the original contract for furnishing fixtures and equipment.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
592 is a resolution to amend the license agreement between the Town of East Hampton and the Montauk Historical Society regarding second house museum, where the Montauk Historical Society has a license to operate the second house museum from September 29th, 2015. The town board wishes to amend the license agreement to allow the historical site to install, maintain, an heirloom apple orchard on the, on the property.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I have Resolution 593, which is a notice of public hearing amending Chapter 255 of the East Hampton Town Code, Community Resource. Resolve that the Town of East Hampton, Town Board of East Hampton will hold a public hearing at Town Hall, 159 Pentagon Road, East Hampton, New York, on Thursday, May 1st, 2025 at 6:00 PM or soon thereafter to consider comments of all persons regarding the adoption of amendments to Chapter 255 of the Town of East Hampton Code, adopting a definition of community resource and exempting projects deemed community resources from the provisions of 255 zoning. And the full text is as follows.
Second.
Discussion, Jake, is, was there, is there a notice issue with this? Can we?
I'd say we hold off for a second.
You want to check that? So, so you want us to withdraw it for tonight?
So, I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to withdraw our table.
We are going to adjourn this.
Sure.
Just, just pull it from tonight's agenda and we're fine.
Okay, I make a motion to withdraw the resolution. I apologize.
593.
Uh, 593.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yeah.
Aye.
Okay, Resolution 594 is to appoint Eric Shantz to Principal Planner 2 in the Planning Department, whereas Eric Shantz is currently the Director of Housing and as Per Suffolk County Department of Human Resources Personnel and Civil Service Rules, he is eligible for permanent appointment to Principal Planner 2. Resolve that Eric Shantz be and is hereby appointed to the full-time position of Principal Planner 2 in the Planning Department at the hourly rate of $44.35, grade 33, step 5, which is $92,251.54 annually for a 40-hour per-week schedule effective April 21st, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome aboard again, Eric. Resolution 595 is to accept a road widening easement in Urban Renewal Parcel 2 in EH 11. Pursuant to local law, the Town Board of the Town of East Hampton adopted urban renewal plans covering lot layout and improvements for old filed maps. And whereas the plan calls for submission of easements by certain property owners for the purposes of permitting widening and other improvements to specific roads in the subdivision, in accordance with the plans, property owners have submitted a widening easement. Resolve that the Town Board approves and accepts these easements. The grantor is Anna Gabriella Romo Soto, and the location is 5 Central Avenue, East Hampton.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 596 is to accept road widening easement in Urban Renewal Parcel 6 in EH -17. And again, this is concerning the urban renewal plans covering lot layout and improvement for old filed maps regarding permitting widening and other improvements to specified roads. Therefore, be it resolved that the Town Board approves and accepts these easements. The grantor is David Cohen and the address is Royal Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 597 is to retain AKRF Consultants' Planning Department and Budget Modification. Whereas due to a shortage of personnel in the Planning Department and time and attention necessary to review pending applications before the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Planning Department has determined that additional resources are required. AKRF has submitted a proposal dated April 15th, 2025, to provide on-call assistance to the Planning Department to support the review of applications for the calendar year 2025. AKRF has provided hourly rates from $140 an hour to $320 an hour set forth in a rate schedule contained in their submitted proposal dated April 15th to perform the services for a not-to-exceed fee of $25,000. Be it further resolved, and also resolve that the Finance Department is hereby directed to make the following budget modification. From full-time salaries, the amount of $25,000 to outside professional in the same amount.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 598 is to retain the law firm of Farrell Fritz PC, Zoning Board of Appeals, and a budget modification. Whereas the law firm, Farrell Fritz PC, has specialized expertise related to zoning matters, Farrell Fritz has submitted a proposal to the town to provide counsel to the Zoning Board of Appeals in connection with all matters subject to its review, including but not limited to secret review and determinations, decisions, public hearings, attendance at board meetings and pre-meetings, reports, and other related matters. The Town Board wishes to retain Farrell Fritz effective April 9th, 2025. Therefore, be it resolved that said counsel is to be paid in accordance with the fee schedule set forth below, and resolve that the Finance Department is hereby directed to make the following budget modification. That amount shall not exceed $15,000, and the budget modification is moving $15,000 from contingency to outside professional.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 599 is approval of various special events for April and May 2025. Resolve that the following special events are hereby approved with the conditions agreed upon by the reviewing committee. One is East Hampton Little League. East Hampton Little League Opening Day at the Fred W. Field Jr. Recreational Facility, 110 Stephen Hans Path and Wayne Scott, Saturday, April 26th, 2025, noon to 2:00 PM.
Can I just add to that, opening ceremony, that's the setup, opening ceremony for East Hampton Little League Opening Day, it's at 12:00 noon that day if anyone wants to attend.
Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
The, next is the Arts Center at Duck Creek, the 2025 Exhibitions for Eastman and Stemmerman. That's at 127 Score Road, East Hampton, in the John Little Barn. Saturday, 5:03 through Sunday, 6:08, 2025, Thursdays through Sundays, 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. The reception is Saturday, May 3rd, 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And again, at the Arts Center at Duck Creek, 2025 Exhibitions for Ralph Stout. This will be in the Little Gallery again, Saturday, May 3rd through Sunday, June 6th, Thursdays through Sundays, 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. The reception is Saturday, May 3rd, 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And the next event is at the Arts Center at Duck Creek for the airing of the quilts. This is, will take place on Saturday, 5:17, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. There is a rain date, which is Sunday, 5:18, 2025, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And finally, East Hampton Historical Farm Museum, lecture and slideshow on historic life-saving at 131 North Main Street, East Hampton. This will take place on Saturday, May 3rd, 1:00 PM to 2:30 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to withdraw Resolution 600.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 601, this is a notice of public hearing for the Town of East Hampton Community Housing Fund, first-time homebuyer down payment assistance program update. Public hearing will be held on May 1st, 2025 at 6:00 PM.
I apologize, he's not here. I'm used to hearing him. It's on me.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 602, this is accept bid number EH 25-004, Parsons Blacksmith Shop siding restoration rebid, and the award goes to Ronald Webb Builder in the amount of $99,956.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 603, this is to amend Resolution 2021-70 to appoint 2025 Springs CAC membership with the names listed below.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 604, this is a status change from part-time to temporary assistant clerk for Caroline Dunning. Caroline Dunning's status changed to temporary assistant clerk for 35-hour, 35-hour work week with no change in hourly rate or budget account, is effective May 1st, 2025 through July 1st, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 2025-605 is to schedule a special meeting for Tuesday, April 29th, 2025, at 11:00 AM for the purpose of holding an executive session to conduct personnel interviews.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
606 is to accept the resignation of Town Attorney Robert Connolly and Deputy Town Attorney Jameson McWilliams.
Second.
If you don't mind, I just want to thank Rob, and I want to thank Jameson for the time and effort here. When I came on the zoning board, whatever.
100 years ago.
13, yeah, yeah. Pre-two kids. Rob was my assistant town attorney at that time, and he provided me great knowledge and information at that time, and he continues to do so. Jameson has been spectacular in working through for myself and other board members and too, they'd be solely missed, but I know that they'll be in the community also, which is always just great to see. I think they were great public servants and helped out the town tremendously over the years, and while they'll be missed here, I look forward to seeing them out in the neighborhood still.
Yeah, I agree. Wish them both the best and happy they're both staying local.
Yes, I absolutely agree. I thank them for all the good work they did for the town.
Will we have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 2025-607 is to appoint part-time traffic control officer David Petrago at the hourly rate of $20 effective April 20th. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 608, appointments to the Town Attorney's Office. Jacob Turner is hereby appointed to Town Attorney at an annual salary of $190,000.
Jacob Turner is hereby appointed to Town Attorney at an annual salary of $190,000 for a 40-hour work week effective April 28, 2025. Brittany Toladano is hereby appointed to Deputy Town Attorney at an annual salary of $155,000 for a 40-hour work week effective honor after May 12, 2025. And Charles Collins is hereby appointed to Senior Town Attorney at an annual salary of $125,000 for a 40-hour work week effective April 28, 2025.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
And welcome, everyone. Welcome, Jake.
Jake.
Although you're not officially the town attorney until the 28th.
But you are a town.
You are. We appreciate you sitting in while Rob is on vacation. Resolution 2025-609 is to amend Resolution 2025-89, the members of the East Hampton Sag Harbor Citizens Advisory Committee, as one member has resigned. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
610 is to accept a donation of a boat to the East Hampton Town Police Department, and the Town Board graciously accepts the donation from GXG Management LLC for the Captain Kidd IV with an estimated fair market value of $135,000 and a replacement-like-new value of $500,000. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 611, this is an after-hearing resolution. We adopt the establishment of the Fire Protection District to be entitled the East Hampton Water Supply and Fire District. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
612 is to authorize attendance at New York Association of Towns 2025 Conference for Kathleen Rude. The financial impact is $800. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
613 is to increase the cap for the Law Office of Vincent Toomey, General Matters, for 2025, constituting a total of $100,000. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
614 is to retain outside counsel, David Spellman Barrett, LLP, in Ellis versus the Town of East Hampton for 2025, in an amount not to exceed $5,000. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 615, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw as it is a duplicate resolution. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 616 is to pay Nimer deductible for Jackson, and this is a claim regarding damage to Gary Jackson's vehicle, and the town agrees to pay Nimer in the amount of $1,526.87. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
617 is to authorize payment of prior-year invoices for the Finance Department, and this is for Verizon Wireless in the amount of $234.22. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
618 is to authorize payment for past due invoice for Riverhead Building Supply in the amount of $79.61. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
619 is to accept a proposal for the structural reinforcement of design plans for the Greenport Cell Tower. The town agrees that structural design plan should be prepared by all points to ensure the stability and safety of the Greenport Tower within current standards at a cost to the town of $3,950. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
620 is to extend contract EH 23-23. This is for the East Hampton Airport mowing for 2023. It went to Suburban Maintenance and Landscaping, Inc., and we are going to extend the contract for a total cost of $14,444 for two mowings annually. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
621 is to extend contract EH 24-017 for the printing of miscellaneous forms for 2024, Montauk Printing and Ridgewood Press. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
622 is to extend contract, the RFP EH 2024-107 for professional engineering services for town projects to L.K. McLean Associates Engineering and Surveying DPC. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 623 is to extend the agreement for specialized bus service for Montauk. It's RFP EH 2023-109 for the Hampton Hopper LLC. And the Hampton Hopper LLC is hereby retained to provide seasonal bus service in Montauk beginning Thursday, June 26 through Monday, September 1 at a cost to the town not to exceed $171,671.54, and this is a sure sign that summer is right around the corner. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 624 is professional and related services for seasonal air traffic control services for East Hampton Public Use Airport to Robinson Aviation, Inc. for 2025. And this is, we're contracted from April 24 to September 7 at a cost of $602,165.60 from the airport fund. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
625 is to approve an agreement with Verizon for Ethernet switched cable. The town is in the process of completing a townwide upgrade to its emergency communication systems, and Ospreys have nested on the Camp Blue Bay Tower prior to the installation of the microwave backhaul equipment, which necessitates the installation of a fiber optic backhaul. So Verizon is going to install this Ethernet fiber circuit at a cost of $889 per month, plus applicable taxes and fees for a one-year term. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 626 ratifies a memorandum of agreement between the town and the dispatchers, and this covers the period of January 1, 2026 through December 31, 2027, and it's dated April 14. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
627 is to authorize time and attendance software, and the cost of software and maintenance for 2026 and beyond is $43,821 annually. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
628 is a budget modification to close a capital project. This goes back to 2015, and we're increasing appropriated unreserved surplus in the amount of $26,655.31, and we're transferring to capital fund in the same amount. Second. All in favor.
Aye.
I have Resolution 2025-629. This is to appoint Assistant Recreational Leader Charles O'Connell from March 3, 2025 through March 14. Sorry, I apologize. Charles O'Connell is hereby appointed to the full-time position of Assistant Recreational Leader, hourly rate of $24.94, grade 15, starting step, annual salary of $45,398.26 for a 35-hour work week, effective April 20, 2025.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
630 is a salary increase to the Secretary of the Superintendent of Highways in the amount of $5,000 prorated based on effective date with no change in budget account or weekly schedule, effective April 21, 2025.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
I have Resolution 631, which is a resolution to allow South Fork Wind LLC to perform out-of-season work on Beach Lane. Whereas pursuant to Town Board Resolution 2021-185, the Town of East Hampton entered into an easement agreement with South Fork Wind on March 9, 2021, whereby the town granted an easement to South Fork Wind for egress, ingress, and access, and for construction, operation, maintenance, and repair of a certain export cable and associated equipment and facilities to be installed, owned, and maintained by South Fork Wind in connection with the South Fork Wind farm to the existing Long Island Power Authority electric substation. Whereas pursuant to South Fork Wind Article 7 permit from the State of New York, as well as Provision 15 of the easement agreement, South Fork Wind LLC is not permitted to perform restoration or remediation activities between May 1 and September 30 of any year unless the town consents to an out-of-season work by a duly-adopted resolution of the Town Board. Whereas the substrate and pavement on Beach Lane and Wayne Scott requires continued repair work, and South Fork Wind has notified the East Hampton Superintendent of Highways of a repair plan that extends beyond April 30. Now, therefore be it resolved that South Fork Wind is authorized to perform out-of-season work on Beach Lane until June 12, 2025. Resolve that if there is excessive bad weather or other unforeseen delays, and work is not completed by May 21, 2025, all work should stop on May 22, 2025, and not begin again until June 2, 2025. Resolve that Beach Lane should be left clean, safe, and unobstructed during the repair period, and that any materials and/or machinery necessary to complete the work may be stored at 106 Stephen Hans Path in East Hampton. Resolve that except unless expressly modified by this resolution, all other terms, conditions, and covenants in the easement agreement shall remain in full force and effect.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Do you have one more, Kate?
I have one more. This is Resolution 632 is to accept the resignation, ARB, appoint new member and alternate. Whereas Susan B. McGregor Scott was appointed to the Architectural Review Board for a five-year term expiring December 31, 2029, as per Resolution 2025-138. Whereas Susan McGregor Scott has resigned from the Architectural Review Board, effective April 17. And whereas Clara Scavoni was appointed to the Architectural Review Board as an alternate member for the calendar year expiring December 31, 2025. Therefore now, therefore be it resolved that Clara Scavoni is hereby appointed to the Architectural Review Board to fill the unexpired term of Susan McGregor Scott, ending December 31, 2029. And be it further resolved that Susan McGregor Scott is appointed as an alternate member to the Architectural Review Board for the remainder of the calendar year 2025.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Do you have anything they want to bring up? Okay, do I have a motion to go into exec session?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for personnel, contracts, and CPF.
Second.
All in favor.